Are you drinking now?
Yeah, I was.
I asked Dallas on Sunday, did you see Rochelle Daniels? Any reports later?
We've got a draft.
Did you watch the draft?
I think she's committed.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Hey, where are you?
Good.
Jeff's in there.
Yeah, he is.
He was panicking, so I was like, okay, I'll be here. I was about to film something.
Should I try to get sprudle here as well, just kind of bring everybody?
Everybody.
I'm uncomfortable with that. I know John would come out of the woodwork, but... I mean, it might be the most exciting thing he's done all day, though.
Yeah.
There was too many of them, right?
Um, it took him a minute.
In case you're wondering, Barry is out changing his tires. Little sub lot.
Yeah.
He's changing his tire, and he has blocked that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think seven hundred.
I thought the license plate was a reason for you.
A resolution in the flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands. Our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. 'Twas the night before.
It is like Christmas.
Exciting, so I know we have lots of excitement happening, and so we'll just get right to it. We have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Move the board through the agenda as presented.
Second.
Great, whenever you're ready. Thank you, Ms. Truster, for being here tonight.
Mr. Bartlow?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Current?
Yes.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, and we're going to move on to honor excellence.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to slowly ease into honoring excellence as we jump into August. And we did want to celebrate a young man who made some big news earlier this summer back in July, that being Kayden Michelson, who was a senior this past year. Did you see Kayden on your screen, a graduate of 2025? Kayden was honored with the Kenneth Smith Award on Thursday, July the third. This award is presented annually to both a greater Kansas City area high school male and female golfer requiring excellence in golf performance, academic achievement, leadership, and community service. No Liberty Public Schools golfer has ever been presented with the Kenneth Smith Award in its 26 years of existence until Kayden. I feel like I sound like a broken record as I say this often with some of our young people. In his senior year at North, Michelson won five of the nine tournaments and placed second in three. He won the district tournament with a score of 68, which Mr. Anderson just scored 69 last week, so to put that in perspective. Through his high school years, Kayden placed fifth, first, second, and then another second at state. He also holds multiple Misha records and has been all-state, all-conference, all-district every one of those four years. Kayden was actually kind enough to meet me up here in the boardroom last week. We had a great chance to catch up before he left for college, and we're going to share a brief clip with you as part of our interview.
It was a bit of a surprise, just because there's so many schools and programs that can nominate players. I think past year, there were over a hundred schools that nominated players, so it was just kind of a shock to find out that I'd won it. I was very grateful and very honored to be chosen. It was a great four years. The unbelievable teams and coaching staff just made the experience very, very good all four years. And, you know, we were a little place to go at all the times, not so good at other times, but it was amazing. I wouldn't trade it for any other four years. It was the most fun I've had in a long time. Yeah, heading up to the University of Nebraska, played it all. You know, probably major in finance, something in the business field.
Awesome, so Kayden went up there last week, and I know Coach Brayden, the golf coach, well, and he told me a few years ago, keep an eye on him for potentially making the pros one of these days, not to put too much pressure on him, but let's give Kayden a big round of applause. We'll be sure to share that also, his clip with the community, and give him some recognition. I wanted to share this. This is going to be kind of a preview and something we've been working on for quite some time, and we're looking forward to unveiling this as the school year moves along. But we're planning on rolling out the LPS award, and LPS, not standing for Liberty Public Schools, is going to stand for Love, Positivity, and Strength. And our plan is, is we're going to select two to three students from a selected school or students to be recognized during our board meetings, not for their grades, trophies, or test scores, but for the quiet impact they make through their kindness, resilience, compassion, and a positive spirit. I know all of you have participated in the character trait luncheons. This is somewhat related to that, but we've heard some feedback. We want to get more elementary kids up here to recognize them, and we're going to introduce this to the buildings here probably in the next week or two. And we look forward to having some young people at our board meeting coming up in September. We're hoping that maybe they could then lead us in the pledge to begin each month and then share some remarkable stories that we hope to capture. So I just wanted to preview that briefly. And then finally, Nikki, just wanted to thank everybody for coming out Friday for our convocation event. I think we have a slide, just a summary of, there it is, just all the action in that jam-packed 90 minutes. Great to have Kaitlyn here with us tonight. I was a little, it caught me off-guard when I saw her earlier, but it worked out great because Kaitlyn was so instrumental in helping me and helping us pull that event off. And just want to thank everyone in the room, including Mr. Gates, who did a wonderful job with his remarks. So, hey, we're off and rolling. We're looking forward to kicking off the new school year tomorrow. I think bright and early. If you're interested, if you watch the KMBC 9 morning show, I think they're coming back to Liberty tomorrow morning. We'll be at South Valley, I think as early as 5 o'clock, so... Again, thanks for all your continued support, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody next month.
I do have one question, sorry. On the LPS, is that strictly elementary, or is that middle and high schools?
It will broaden beyond elementary, absolutely. But again, I just mentioned elementary, just the fact that we really want to try to make a point to get more of those wonderful young people up here.
Yeah, middle school, too.
Absolutely.
I feel like we see a lot of high schools, not so many middle schools.
Great idea, great idea. And thanks to you and Kaitlyn for all the work that you put into convocation. It was a fantastic event, as it always is. So I hope everybody had a great time and feel energized for the year, and that we're going to have a great year.
Appreciate that. Certainly a team effort, as always, so have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody. All right, so we are, I don't know, next would be our public comment section. Do we have anybody who has put in or submitted a call? No? Mr. Gates, not happening. Mr. Gates has not submitted a public comment tonight? All right, well, I guess then we will move forward to our item three, which is our consent agenda. I move the board approved consent agenda, items 3.1 through 3.7.
Second.
And then call the wolf and everybody. Ms. Truster?
Mr. Bartlow?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Current?
Yes.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, then let's move to item four, reports from the administration.
First off, we have our Innovation and Learning Report, and we'll welcome Dr. Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening. 'Twas the night before.
I know, we're so excited. Well, on August 7th, we had Summit 53, and we welcomed just under 80 new staff, certified staff, to LPS. That included 10 Liberty graduates, which is always exciting to see. Got to scan the room and see some students from Discovery Middle School that I had there, so that's always really cool to see students that I had who had grown up and are now teaching. During that time together, over those three days, we looked at conscious discipline, real-world learning, belonging, focused on instructional practices, technology, curriculum, safety and security, and ed law. Spent three days in the morning together, and then teachers were able to go back to their buildings in the afternoon and spend some time in their classroom, spend some time with their mentors and with their principals. So we do a survey with new certificated staff just to get some feedback from them, so we can always try to make that better. So we will take that and work to make it better for next year, but I appreciate everyone who is able to come to that. I know it's a busy time of year, but we do appreciate that, and I think that it went really well. Also, pre-service, so then that started on August 12th. We had all of our teachers back, and on August 13th, we were able to have a keynote, which I think all of you were able to see previously. At MSBA, David Edward Garcia came and spoke to our elementary and secondary teachers and had them laughing. I think he was a hit. I loved getting emails and having people come up to me after and just say, "Thank you. Thank you for just letting us laugh." He had a great message about impact. It was, you know, everybody from the bus driver to the custodian to the classroom teacher, he talked about you never know when you're going to make an impact, but within that message, he just was really funny. He had some new material since when we saw him at the MSBA conference, but he was definitely a hit. And he walked into that building, and he was like, "I can't believe how nice this place is." He actually was driving by, and he said, "I'm not sure if I'm in the right place." He called, and he said, "I'm driving by this huge stadium. I'm not sure if this is it." And I'm like, "That's it," and he's like, "Oh, my goodness." So that was really, really nice, but thank you for allowing us to bring him in as well. We had back-to-school night last night for all of our elementary schools. And next week, secondary schools will host our parents on Monday and Tuesday nights. Also this week, in addition to starting school, early college starts, our CNA program at William Jewel will start. Yes, Dan? And then our cipher program, which is our cybersecurity program that we are able to start this year. Thank you to all of you. Our goal was to have eight students in that program, and we have eight students in that program that will start. So we're excited to see how that goes. Also, I wanted to point out that I shared with you some updates to the handbook based on some board policy revisions that is posted. Those revisions are also posted to the, the handbooks are updated on the LPS website for everyone to see as well. So if there are any questions, let me know about that. Finally, I just want to give a big thank you to the operations team, I can't see Steve, sorry. For getting our schools ready for our students tomorrow, and to our HR department for hiring some amazing teachers for us and support staff, so that we can take care of our kiddos when we start tomorrow. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thanks for adding the handbooks. That was, that was nice to see and be able to look through.
Hey, the QA and data appeals note that's in the report, I don't recall us doing that before. Is that something new with the MSIT 6 or 5 or whatever we're in now?
That has always been the case, where you have a window to appeal any discrepancies.
Okay.
Oftentimes, it falls into those category of students that are identified as level not determined, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a clerical error on their part in terms of filling out information and so forth, but it is an opportunity for us to vet and verify what DESI is showing is the same as what we're showing before that APR goes live.
Yep.
So...
Perfect, okay.
Do you have an idea roughly how many students we're talking about? I don't want to, if it's so small, I don't want it to be personally identifiable.
No, and really, keep in mind, you're vetting and reviewing every data point for the district and the submission, whether it's EOC test results or map assessments. So it's pretty extensive, but it literally is combing through line after line after line of data. So we appreciate our innovation and learning team that does that. So every student that took an assessment ultimately is the answer.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the one-pager that has been going out. I mean, I know that both of my, having two secondary students, having in addition to the revised handbook on the cell phone policy, having the communication one-pager for cell phone, and hearing that reinforced in the PTA meeting that I have been to with two parents. I mean, I think that continued effort to message on that is important to everybody who's helping to push that out, whether it's communications or the buildings or innovation and learning. I think, I mean, I think that's going to continue to be something that we'll probably get questions on, but I appreciate the continued communication about how this is the state law and that there is board policy and there's just kind of some Q and A. That's all helpful resources to have.
Yeah, our buildings have done a good job of answering any questions so far, and both, especially the high schools, have a plan for this week of how to address the... especially the high schools, have a plan for this week of how to address the students, how to work with the students, of sharing the information with them, and then reinforcing it consistently. And then we'll come back together and just make sure that we're just seeing how it's going and how do we adjust. But it'll be a transition period.
Other questions of Dr. Moore?
You've been busy, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have 4.2 then, our student equity and access report with Dr. Dixon Sehorn.
Good evening, everyone.
You've been busy.
You've all been busy. Yes, 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 very excited to share the things that I wanted to highlight on this evening, beginning in the student services department. We're now in our third year of hosting that annual convening for administrative professionals. So we did that on July the 31st. And although we have about 80 of them, when you think about district-wide, we were able to host about 59 of them that were able to be in attendance on that day. And so this is just that opportunity to just come together and learn together, and it really was set up this year almost like a mini-conference for them. And so it was amazing. So do want to give a shout out to Ms. Rebecca Bressman as our Director of Student Services, and then also Dr. Tanika Brown, who assisted and supported her in that endeavor. And then also another shout out to Dr. Jessica Meisenheimer, who was the keynote for that convening of our team members. Also, want to highlight that we are so, so, so excited to begin tomorrow with 726 kindergarten students. Now, that's as of today's timestamp. A few more could obviously show up on tomorrow, but when I looked at some enrollment data from May of this past school year, we ended with about 687. So I think that that's a pretty good uptick. That's about 40 more kindergartners, so moving in the right direction. Also, we've noted that we have about 97% of our families, these are the returning students, where families got them fully registered. So we have given kudos to Alexander Donovan, they reached that goal, 100% of their families, their students that are returning, and got them all fully registered. And we also wanted to note that many of our elementary schools are like within five students who just needed to kind of get those, the families need to get that information buttoned up. So again, we want to thank our administrative professionals, who are obviously on the front line of this registration process, and we're very, very excited about starting school tomorrow. Wanted to also mention on behalf of special programs, they have a couple of things listed here, just want to point out that the Liberty North High School Hope Squad was featured in the National Hope Squad Newsletter. This was amazing because it spotlighted their inaugural Hope Week celebration, which occurred during the spring semester. And so the good thing here is that it was planned by students, right, the Hope Squad team members. And as you may recall, we launched Hope Squad officially for our, our district in the spring, and so we'll be able to fully implement this school year. Also, wanted to mention that our very own Johnny Francis, our, the campus emotional support dog, was also able to make his appearance at that event. And then also the advisors, Angie Curry and Brittany Morgan, Angie of LNHS and Brittany of HMS, attended the National Advisor Conference. This is a really big deal, and that provided some opportunities for professional learning for them, that they can in turn bring back to us as a school district, so we can get better at getting better in serving our learners. Also, this one is near and dear to my heart that I want to share, and that is the annual social work back-to-school event that was held this past Thursday from 11:00 AM to 12:30 at Liberty North. This was an amazing event. This was the first year that I was actually able to get up there and just see it for myself. There was a point at which I was able to just assist one of the social workers and counselors in passing out some hygiene kits and other materials to families, and to see the faces of the children themselves saying, "Thank you, I want this, I want that, may I have this?" It was just a wonderful, wonderful occasion. We had about 300 families that signed up, and there were actually about 232 that actually came through that drive-through event. So we do have additional backpacks available for families, those that are in need, that we are able to distribute. Would also like to note that two conscious discipline family nights are planned for the fall semester. I believe some of you may have come out for that last school year, and so this is going to be held on Tuesday, September the 16th, as well as Tuesday, November the 4th. Those sessions will be held at the LPS Early Childhood Center, and then facilitated by Conscious Discipline Master Instructor Nicole Mercer. And again, we want to note here that although the primary audience is for families of early childhood and elementary students, participation is open to all who are interested in learning about conscious discipline. I also want to make mention that over the summer, that Dr. Meisenheimer and team members were able to provide conscious discipline PD and support for members in our Kid Zone, our, our Kid Zone managers, members of our safety and security team, as well as transportation department team members. So this is going above and beyond just professional learning that classroom teachers get, but any and all team members that are interested across Liberty Public Schools. And then on behalf of special services, I want to mention that on Wednesday, August the 13th, the Special Services Leadership Team, under the direction of our Director, Dr. Alexis Stark, held the first parent information night of the school year. They focused on helping families to differentiate between the 504 Plan and the IEP, because sometimes those do get a little confusing. And then also, we had about 22 parents in attendance, which is amazing, and then several that chimed in via Zoom, as well as some team members from the SPED department. And so the next convening will be held on September the 10th and cover the ABCs of SPED at LPS. So those are highlights I wanted to share this evening in this board report, and I'll gladly take any questions or comments.
Any questions of Dr. Dixon Sehorn?
Just remind me, I love the backpack and the pickup side, it gets fantastic, but throughout the year, hygiene, we've got hygiene kits available for kiddos if they need them right at the schools?
Absolutely. Our social workers and counselors work together to identify those families that have needs, and yes, that, that happens all throughout the school year. This is just, this serves the purpose of getting ready for the school year. Yes.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Dr. Dixon Sehorn.
Thank you so much.
Next then, our finance report, 4.3, Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Good evening. I didn't get to say this to you last month, so Happy New Year. We're ready to start another new year, we're a month in already, but I always, I miss telling you that, so, but thank you for...
Well, thanks for filling us in.
Yeah, yeah, in case you missed it, yeah.
I'm waiting for the next one, which is the budget's already wrong.
Well, that's true, and you, you don't even need to hear that, you know that. You are well-trained.
We've been well-educated.
That's right. So tonight, I'm going to start off with a donation, and I would like to recognize a donation of supplies valued at $543.83 from Office Depot. There you go.
Banner Hill Elementary.
And that's to benefit the students and staff at Banner Hill Elementary, and as always, we, we really appreciate that program that they allow us to participate in for the benefit of our students. I have received some preliminary information on the senior real estate, property tax relief program just this morning, and this is preliminary. You must remember, it's preliminary.
It's preliminary.
It will change, it's preliminary. So the county did receive 17,352 applications for senior tax relief. Out of those 17,000, 4,189 of them belonged to Liberty, so approximately 24%. We experienced an AV increase, an assessed value increase of almost $30 million over those 4,000-ish parcels, okay? That's a 12.8% average increase on those parcels. If you take that increase and apply our tax levy, the current levy, that is not debt service, so it's just the operating and the capital levy, and you apply it to that AV increase, that results in a revenue loss of about a little over $1.4 million. That's at 2024 rates. Tax rate will change potentially when we have our tax rate hearing next month. So again, it's preliminary. It will change when we get better information, and the tax levy is final in September. But that does give us an estimate to be thinking about as we start doing budget amendments, and it was good to put some numbers to it, so I appreciate the county delivering that information to us.
But with that preliminary number of 1-4, we didn't have that last year, we would have had that this year, but now it may be deferred.
Correct. Yes, you're exactly right. And the county is actually working through some of those things, you know what to do if an application was submitted and then the household, how to evaluate that. So there's some things like that, that they know that they have to work on, and so there, the number will change. So it was, I had a good conversation with the assessor, and then received a couple of emails from the other departments of the county weighing in on it. So they're working hard on it, and I, like I said, I'm just super appreciative that we got this information right now, but I did want to pass that on to you.
So is your understanding that, that they will, this will be applicable effective with the next tax cycle for the county?
That is correct. So the rev, this will apply to the revenue that we receive in January of 2026, so this budget year.
And this next setting of the tax rate.
And this next setting of the tax rate.
Which is next month's regular meeting.
Which is next month, September.
And the important piece there is that the value of the parcel continues to grow and contributes to how we set our tax rate, the revenue doesn't follow.
That is correct.
So that's an important distinction.
So it multiplies every year, as long as that initial application is on the rolls and they keep applying year to year. We not only lose the 1-4 this year, we lose the 1-4 plus whatever increase next year, so it compounds, it grows.
And any new citizens that apply, obviously, so.
Correct. And then as houses are sold or roll off for other reasons, then that revenue, then this is another thing that the county is working on, what, how it's valued when it rolls back out of the senior tax credit. The ordinance language doesn't speak to it.
Really?
It does not, so...
You're surprised?
A little bit.
I talked to the assessor about that today, and he and I feel the same way, so we'll see what they, how they come up with applying that.
Well, the statute provided infinite guidance, too.
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, there's a lot for them still to figure out, and it'll probably be one of those things that, you know, you fly it as you build it.
Well, do you know, it'll all make changes again by the time we...
There may be some cleanup legislatively that happens.
Sure.
But obviously, our, our advocacy would be around whatever the current market value is for the home and their current assessment, not when it was frozen for that citizen at the time. But we'll see how that plays out.
And I would anticipate the biggest change would come in how our levy changes. So I don't really anticipate their assessed values to change that much in the cleanup.
Maybe a good, like, if we have space on the study session, for like a 15-minute primary on how this will impact this, the shift in tax burdens. On the tax piece, yeah.
And as, we'll know more, obviously, when we have the tax rate hearing in September. And I do not have the final numbers from the county yet. Last year, I didn't receive those until September 10th.
Sure.
So our board meeting for the tax levy hearing is set for September 16th, so that's going to be a really quick turnaround. So I won't have a whole lot of information if the timeline is the same as last year until that point.
Just from my standpoint, a reminder of, you're going to have the valuation that's going to continue to increase. It's obviously not going to be paid at the same rate by those individuals, for all the reasons. How does that impact the tax levy? What do we need to consider or understand about that as we move forward?
And I can tell you right now that, and this is a, a great question, and I'm not sure how it's going to be answered. I'm, my assumption is that in calculating our levy, the full value, the full assessed value of those properties will go in to calculating the levy, which then artificially decreases our levy because of the Hancock Amendment. So it's a double ding. If I'm, and I haven't seen the tax calculator to think that it's changed any. The preliminary tax calculator does not show any kind of a add-back for how you're affected by this ordinance.
Okay.
Great question.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
And note, note made for future study sessions.
Yeah, so anyway, more to come on that tax rate hearing we talked about. Westbrook and Company will be here September 8th through 12th to perform our annual audit. The Audit and Finance Committee will meet with the auditor on Monday, September 8th. Just to note, this is a closed session, and there won't be any district staff present, so it gives the Audit and Finance Committee a chance to speak to the auditor on their own for any concerns that they might have about any practice procedure or personnel in the district. So we'll look forward to hearing from them on that. And finally, the Audit and Finance Committee did review the documents this month. I had no concerns to pass on to you, but I would like to just share that I had a great email exchange with one of our members who works as a financial advisor, and he's, he's really great to bring questions, just because he doesn't know, but it also spurs on good conversation. And this week, we talked about investments and board policy around investments and how that all works. And he's going to take a look, we're in the process, we just provided cash flows for the year to our company that looks at our investments with us, and they're going to bring a plan back to us. And I'm going to pass that on to him and have him look at it, because he's in the business. And so that email exchange was just a great way to get them involved a little bit more in looking at what we do on a monthly basis for them. So it was a fun conversation for me to have, and I appreciate even another set of eyes from a professional looking at that. So I wanted to pass that on to you. And that's what I have for you tonight, but I'll entertain any other questions that you might have.
Any questions of Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.4 then, our operations report with Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. So it's the time of year for operations annual reports. All eight have been uploaded. I'm sure you've had a chance to review them thoroughly, and if you have any questions, I, I will try to attempt to answer them. But I did want to thank each of the directors, won't note them all by name, but the work that they did to put these together, obviously, this is a culmination of all the monthly reports that they work hard on, on their own, of course. And then too, to thank them, as Dr. Moore mentioned, this team has been pretty active over the past couple of months, and all their crews, in addition to the varied construction projects, just the normal preventive maintenance routine and other things that we take care of every year over the course of the summer. So just thank, thanks to all of them, of course. With respect to construction and bond activity and capital projects, those reports are uploaded as well. And I made the tour today, I usually try to avoid tomorrow, and so today, made, made it to, to every site that's really had any construction of note, and have been obviously monitoring it very closely. Everybody feels really good about where we're at, and there's a couple minor glitches, nothing that's going to prevent us from having a great day tomorrow. I think the only issues maybe of note, little disappointment is the South Island Discovery Gyms, the bleachers are out, they won't be able to use the space for PE for a couple days, mainly because they're, they're repairing some issues on the bleachers. Both principals were, of course, great and fantastic, understanding knowing that, that that occurred. Other than that, I also wanted to just thank both the City of Liberty and City of Kansas City, you know, obviously, when we're getting after this work over the course of the summer, a lot of deadlines, a lot of last-minute changes, especially the City of Liberty, who we, you know, we have most of our projects around the Liberty side, and really can't thank them enough for the timeliness of their responses to partnering with us to solve challenges and issues, and just really, it, it just makes a big difference, I'm sure as you can appreciate, when you're kind of rolling through the, the day as, and as crazy as it can get, it can get. And the only other thing I was going to mention, I talked to Megan Lucian over in Kid Zone today, just to check on the waitlist. As you know, usually this time of year, it's a little bit of a crunch. Actually, she's got two or three at Lewis and Clark on the waitlist, everybody else is in, and we have a staff member starting, I think, Friday, so I think by Monday, we'll, Lewis and Clark will be fully covered, and therefore, we will not have any prospective Kid Zone students on the waitlist, which is great, and as you all know, a change from years past. Apart from that, that's all I have. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Steve, I'm getting a lot of questions about Heritage, the 1923, is that one, yeah?
Yeah.
The 23 building?
Yeah, so they're saying, "Where are the kids going to go to school at?" That's what I'm getting asked.
Everywhere other than the 1923 building, yeah.
Give me a little more detail, and also, a little more background about what's, what foundationally is wrong, or being fixed.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot going on in there, everything from roof work to HVAC to tuck pointing, to some of the repairs on the front columns that have been deteriorating over time, all the interior spaces getting a complete makeover, I mean, they gutted everything.
I see the picture.
So it's going to be... going to be a, a complete overhaul, trying to be sensitive to the character of the building where we can. But, yeah, so the work is, is complete, right, in those three floors. And we've found some things and run into some things that were challenges that we knew we were likely to run into things. We just didn't know what those things were, but sure enough, there were quite a few things. But, so, so anyway, they're kind of working through all that. I will say that, the, the real challenge has been, and, and we spent a lot of time with the building leadership, with a lot of folks on the team, figuring out how to accommodate the work, making sure everybody had space, making sure it was accessible, making sure it was safe, fire code compliant. And there's, there's a lot of factors. The drop off routine, where to put administration and, and kind of secure entry. And they came together with a plan that really, I was over there today, is working pretty well. It's awkward because you got to avoid that front building, so you're kind of moving around quite a bit.
Yeah.
But their, their spirits were high, I think. They're ready, they're ready for it.
My kid's got her class schedule. She's ready to go tomorrow.
Okay.
And they had some of the shifting around when we redid the, we reconfigured the cafeteria as well as did the work on the other side of the building, right? So they've, they've been displaced not too long ago, so.
They're a pretty easygoing group over there, which makes a big difference. Yeah.
That's getting a lot of attention.
Yeah.
It'll be so great when it's done.
It will.
Somebody might say it was worth it.
Could you provide some commentary around the new distribution center and how that's all come together and going to help us out this year?
Yes, I'd be happy to. First of all, it's, it's been a, it's, it's a great project. For those that have been in there and toured it, if you haven't, I would, I would recommend you try to get down there anytime you can stop down and, and walk in and take a look. But, yeah, it's really come together that both nutrition services and purchasing warehouse and distribution are together in the one space. And it's the storage component, especially with nutrition services products, the freezer, the refrigeration, and then the dry storage is just transformational. One, we're out of the cave now, which is significant. But the ability to really, I don't know, stockpile is not probably the right word for things like cheese, but, you know, we're, we're getting a lot of added product and taking advantage of, of like purchasing at scale options that we haven't had in the past.
Yeah.
Which, again, just benefits us in many ways.
Great.
But, yeah, great project. Everybody down there is pretty pride, prideful. But if you get Mr. Bright down there, he'll take you for a tour and you'll see the.
Want to go to the test kitchen?
Yes, they will. Yes.
That's great.
Yeah.
Wisconsin cheese, right?
I really enjoy actually reading all of these reports because there's just such interesting tidbits of information that you just can't, I can't fathom. A hundred and fifty thousand visits to the nurse's office. Like, how does that even happen? Like, there's just numbers that I just, it's fascinating, all of these things.
Or how many square feet we have in this district, or how many acres. I'm like, holy cow. That is, yeah. Just like Jen said, there was some great facts in there that were just, and of course, as we all know, I like the first page best.
Yeah, the letter, the cover letter is awesome.
It does put it into perspective as far as the magnitude.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, families know their neighborhood school and wherever their kiddo is at and the feeders, and then they kind of don't, don't necessarily see the full extent of the district. So, other questions of Mr. Anderson?
Just thanks to your team.
You bet. I'll pass it along. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next is our human resources report with Dr. Sarah Marriott.
Good evening.
Hi.
To expand on what Dr. Moore shared, we welcomed seventy-nine new team members, certificated team members, on August the seventh. And as she shared, ten of them were Liberty graduates to that group of educators. But we also received, that included eighteen new certificated team members that are brand new to the profession. Eight of those team members did their student teaching at Liberty Public Schools. And what is most impressive to me is that fifty nine, fifty-one of the new hires have a master's degree or higher. So that's really exciting to see a great group of new teachers welcoming to LPS. And we've got all of our positions filled in the certificated world with the exception of one, which was due to a late resignation. So we're continuing to work on filling that position, but that is not a classroom-based position. And then our HR team has been busy planning several professional development opportunities for this school year, including a retirement solutions expo on November the twelfth for any staff member who might just be thinking about retirement down the road. A pathways to teaching cohort for our classified team members who are thinking that maybe they have an interest in teaching. And we're connecting them with six different universities throughout that cohort. So helping them get ready for that next career move. And we're continuing with our Aspired, Aspiring Classified Leaders Cohort, our Aspiring Administrators Academy. And then we are hosting five professional development sessions this year for our district leadership team members. And one new component that I've also shared, I believe, previously with you, is that we are conducting new hire orientation sessions this year. And that is the first Wednesday of every month. And next month, September third, we will welcome sixty-four new classified team members. So. And then finally, Team Liberty meeting dates are scheduled. Our first one is Monday, August the twenty-fifth. We welcome two new team members, one right here. And we will have our first review of benefits renewal from Holmes Murphy, and we will begin discussions about benefits. Any questions?
Questions of Dr. Marriott?
I don't have, sorry, I don't have any questions. I thank you for doing the mental health wellness focus groups. Just reading through that and some of the comments coming back, I think are incredibly helpful. So.
And we'll continue those this fall and spring as well.
Kudos.
The focus groups, she'll do those at different, so good, at different times, too. So that was interesting because it was in May. And so it would be interesting to have longitudinal to see at different times.
We'll host three this fall and then we'll do three additional in the spring as well.
That's good. I also really love the, the new hire orientation. How long of a, do you know how long that will run? Or, or just, is it, is it a webinar? Is it, it's in person?
It's in person. It's about two and a half to three hours. And it will be the first Wednesday of every month for the duration of the school year.
Okay.
Yeah, as we have new team members.
That's great.
And then they also have a mentor, right?
Our classified team members not as, to the depth or level as our certificated team members, but yes, they usually have someone that they can connect with.
That's great.
Regarding those meetings with, with teachers, what, I think anxiety was one of them and about boundaries in terms of working late, what, any, any initial responses to that or how you're going to respond to it?
So we are looking at a couple of different ways to explore that. One is having conversations with Team Liberty, so taking that information back to them, as well as it is one of our, it is our only strategic plan goal for the Human Resources Department. And so we are having ongoing internal meetings to discuss that information as well as explore other opportunities and options to share information. So we're always looking for ways to do things better.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is that the November meeting that's usually like the quality of, quality?
Oh, for Team Liberty. Sometimes November, February.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if it's you specifically, but it's your report that has the, the student numbers in it. I guess I talked about everybody in this one.
Yeah.
It's the one place to look at the numbers. And based on what Dr. Dixon Sehorn said, kindergarten is up to seven twenty-six. And I looked and we ended last year with about a hundred less than that, six something. So, I mean, I, I guess there's nothing in the enrollment this year that has resulted in anything unanticipated. I mean, a hundred seems like a lot, but I guess if you spread it over a dozen elementaries, it may not be that significant. I was just wanting to ask that.
I think that's correct. And a couple, a couple notes and jump in here, too. Your September count is really the tell-all. And as we submit that information to DESI, that becomes kind of our hard count. When you look at the end of the year and how we ended in May, and I actually just had it up as well, Dr. Solari provides that information to us compared to where we are presently, it does appear you've got a little bit of an uptick in that kindergarten enrollment. I attribute that to people coming back or birth rates or, you know, a lot of factors going on nationally and so forth. Shoal Creek, for example, is one where you have a very high fifth grade. And then you look at their kindergarten this year, like it is substantially less. You look at Kelly Brook, they've got a little bit of an uptick, right? To your point, you spread that across the elementary schools and then you literally hone in on section by section and class by class, knowing that full well tomorrow, there will be families that show up that are new.
They took a ratio over.
You also have those that are in the hopper who may not show up, who have elected to transfer or moved out of state or out of district. So that's why that, that September period allows some of that dust to, dust to settle. I say all that to say, as we enter into this year, probably the study session, looking at our facility, facility master planning and our projections as far as enrollment, looking at it as compared to actual, some of those factors we'll be able to look at more broadly. So.
Well, it seems like a couple of years ago in that we've had the flexibility where maybe we added, we had more at a specific school and we needed to add a section of kindergarten and we were able to do that. So.
Every, every year and usually even beyond the start of the year, because you may, you may end up getting hypothetically another five kindergartners at a building that then requires an additional staff person or at another elementary grade level. So Dr. Moore, Dr. Marriott, I know Dr. Dixon Sehorn in terms of support services, we're all kind of monitoring that over the course of the start of school year. So what would you add, Dr. Marriott?
The only thing that I would add is Dr. Moore and I have frequent conversations based on Dr. Solari's information of really what was enrollment last year, what do we anticipate it, which ones are we watching and highlighting those? We were just having a conversation right before the board meeting. So it's carefully monitored and it really, as Dr. Tucker shared, it really kind of depends on what flushes out at the end of the week. You know, how many students do return that indicated that they are and how many new students enroll that we weren't expecting. And so there may be some small adjustments, but I think overall, Dr. Solari and Dr. Moore do a really nice job of best capturing those numbers in the best way possible.
It is interesting that Kelly Brook at the moment has more students registered in kindergarten than Shoal Creek.
That is. That's a little bit different.
Right up there, too.
Mm-hmm.
Which, I go back to our, I don't know, it's been a couple of years, but when we decided that a certain subdivision was being built, we said this is going to go to Kelly Brook and Shoal Creek.
New homes, younger families.
Reduce Shoal Creek. So I wonder if that's coming to fruition, right? Now you're getting the homes built and people are moving in. So that's just a natural effect.
Yeah, it's also interesting that other than that kindergarten delta, the rest of them are pretty doggone close year over year. It's just, just kind of jumps out. I, I think the other thing that it reminds me of is, well, when these kids were born, they were born in twenty twenty. And then you think of conception, I'm thinking next year.
Wow, Dan.
Biology class. That's very, that's very precise.
I mean, on that note, has our demographer accounted for that?
Dan, you've called the light to New York City, huh?
The assumption is, is that it, it does bounce back at, at some point, right? Or unless we're in this new trend of, you know, young couples waiting longer to have children, hard to say. But that, those are all questions that we would certainly want to engage our demographer in, along with rooftops being built. And what's the likelihood of that yielding students? Conversations we have all of the time. The other thing I would add to this conversation is just as we're talking about, you know, adding a section or an influx of a kiddo or a group of kiddos at a building, as we look at grades and classrooms across the system, like you might think you can pull away from one building because those class sizes are low, but as soon as you pull that teacher out, guess what happens? It pops.
Yep.
And so you have to make decisions internally as to, do you move a classroom teacher as we're starting week one, even two, week three? Or do we post a, a position to have someone fill in for a period and go from there? So thus, the reliance on our team to watch that and watch that closely, of which they do. So.
And we're grateful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions of Dr. Marriott? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, then, superintendent's report, just to echo some of what you all have shared and our cabinet members as well, just an extreme gratitude for all the work that's happened over the course of the summer and getting us to today. It goes by incredibly fast with lots of work going on around the district. I, too, had an opportunity to tour some of our buildings and check in on folks after convocation Friday afternoon. And just, when you look at it and you look at all of the construction, some of which is still forthcoming and will be completed a little bit later on, we, we've done a lot of work over the course of the summer. Do also want to thank our communications team, Dallas and Caitlin and so many others that assisted with convocation on Friday. It was great to have our staff back and inside, which I think was the right decision, given the heat of the day on Friday. Couple things to add as far as current events. Several of us attended a recent regional meeting of Legislative Committee and Interim Committee that's traveling around the state of Missouri in and around, soliciting feedback regarding property taxes and property tax reform. So they hosted a meeting in Kansas City back on August thirteenth. And on that particular evening, it was a full house, a lot of people in attendance. The topic that really was center stage was some of the assessment practices going on in Jackson County. That was not the intent of the interim committee. They're looking more broadly at, at the state level, specifically around things they may bring forward during the legislative session. Superintendents were represented. Mr. Dr. Southwick from Cooperating School District provided testimony, took a little heat from some questions and from some legislators. But I appreciate Cindy, as well as Karen, attending that event. I think it lasted right at around three hours before they, before they closed the meeting. They have a couple more meetings set up across the state, so we'll watch that. That then parallels the work that's happening with the School Modernization Task Force, of which local effort and property revenues are certainly an important piece to the foundation formula and how funds are dispersed across districts based upon their local effort. So it'll be interesting to see how one conversation fits with the other. That group, the task force, met also on August thirteenth. And we heard from a lady by the name of Bonnie O'Keefe. Dr. O'Keefe is from Bellwether, who was involved in a study of foundation formulas from across the country, did a good comparison of Missouri's formula with states that are similar to ours. The big takeaway at that conversation was Missouri is actually a little further ahead in some of the work that we've done in our formula that now other states are considering. So it's not an all that bad formula, basically encouraging us not to completely throw it out and start from scratch. There's certainly some tweaks and things that can be done. The next meeting is scheduled for September ninth. And we're also beginning the process of coordinating work groups and when those meetings will happen into the fall semester. So we'll share more about that information. In addition, in September, there are another set of eight districts that are going to be soliciting approval from the State Board of Education for the third innovation waiver tied to success rate of the students network. So we look forward to that meeting and including additional districts in that work. The other piece I would share is with the announcement that the federal government had approved the, the state's innovation waiver request through the Innovative Assessment Demonstration Authority. We now are starting to create and kind of form the plan as to what that work will look like. We still have to take the MAP tests this year and then of course exams. But then as far as subsequent years, we'll have a better indication as to what that will look like as we start to pilot what new assessments might look like. Last thing that I would say, which you all have said it already, is just hope for a great start tomorrow. I know families, some are ready to get back into their routines, while others are taking their kindergarten to school for the first day. Others are sending their seniors off in their last school year. So we wish everyone well tomorrow and thank everyone for the work that they've done in getting us ready for this new school year. With that, would open it up for any questions you all may have of me.
Did I read that correctly? Missouri was the only state selected?
In response to.
To, to the success rate, I thought.
Yeah, for this year. That was the only one that was approved.
So.
It'll be interesting to watch other states in that there was a recent decision in Oklahoma that was made for kind of throwing out the state assessment and allowing local school districts to choose their own assessments. So that's a relatively new announcement. That'll be something to watch and how that plays out in Oklahoma and whether the federal government allows that as sufficient evidence of fulfilling federal requirements. Not sure how that's going to play out, but you may also see the Missouri Legislature bring bills forward that mirror what we're seeing in Oklahoma. So a lot of conversations around assessment.
So are you aware of any elements that make the difference?
I don't know. In terms of the facts, in terms of. In terms of the feds, in terms of the federal government.
Did Missouri do different?
We looked at other states, but it's also very much collaborative between the Department of Education and the field districts. I think that's what makes us stand out.
So the cooperation might be...
The collaboration between the Department of Ed and local school districts, perhaps.
The state agency and the LEAs.
Yep.
Okay.
And weren't you, weren't several of the superintendents also engaged with members of Congress at some point?
When we were there in July, we brought that up with all of our legislative body in DC, asking if they could assist or put in a good word, right? Part of that advocacy effort, so.
Sure.
I don't know that that attributed to it, but hopefully it did.
How did, how did we receive the notice? Did DESI get a letter or a phone call?
DESI was informed, and then they notified the Success Ready Student Network Facilitation Team, which I'm part of, but then also our districts that are part of that. And then they communicated that information more broadly through their communication memo, so.
It's a big deal.
More work to come, certainly on that.
Big deal, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right.
All right, so I guess we're done with administrative reports, so we can move on to our unfinished business.
The first item is some board policy updates. You saw these earlier in July, and so you have several that are uploaded for your consideration this evening. I did want to make mention of one. It's IGD, District Sponsored Extracurricular Activities and Groups. We have a question into MSBA regarding some clarification, and so we did pull that, we'll bring that back to you probably at the September study session with a response or an answer from them as far as language. But the rest of those, we wanted to present to you this evening for your consideration.
And as a reminder, not only do we review them, but obviously the impacted departments take a look at it, make sure it fits, right?
Yes. Thanks for that reminder. That's correct.
I move the board-approved policy, BBBA-1, IGBI, IGCD, IGCDAA, IGDAA, and Regulation JGR-1.
Second. Mr. Bartlow?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Current?
Yes.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, new business, item six.
Six point one is contracts and purchases, of which we have one to share with you this evening. I'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
Yes, this is just, it was emergency purchase a couple of weeks ago related to Liberty Academy finishing off the kitchen space in there, and we had a accelerated purchase to help the schedule, overall construction schedule. So we just went ahead and moved forward with that, according to all the policies, and we appreciate consideration of that tonight.
Who would like for them to have a kitchen? I move the board approve the emergency contract with Volter LLC. Second. Mr. Bartlow?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Current?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yes. All right. We're now to the point where we need to talk about legislation and advocacy. You already kind of covered off the special committee. There may be a special session, but I don't know that it's really going to hit anything for us.
So the other ones that you indicated were to be held, they're going to be in different parts of the state? It's just that the first one happened to be here?
Well, this is the third one.
This is the third one. They hosted the first one, I believe, in Jefferson City, and then Lebanon, and then Kansas City region. They have a couple left, two or three left, I believe.
Okay. But it's kind of the same show, just going along the...
Similar format, yeah. And the intent is as a listening session, yeah, so.
And then, I think, advocacy, thank you for your advocacy.
I have a couple things very quickly. First, Education Foundation's report. Tana would like me to remind everyone, this is the thirtieth year. They have approximately nine hundred employees signed up through the employee campaign so far. Education Foundation back to, to the social worker back-to-school backpacks. The Education Foundation coordinates that and collects all of the materials for the social workers to pass all of that out, and so just to kind of back, you know, whatever. Also, the community showcase is coming up. It will be October thirtieth in the morning, but they don't have a location set just yet. So if you want to put October thirtieth in the morning for the Education Foundation Community Showcase, that is when that would be.
Thank you.
Costumes mandatory.
Yes. I love it.
You should probably get a T-shirt, you know, the cool groovy neon thing.
I love it.
Also, in my role as Chair of LAFI, we are rolling out, I'm so excited about this because we came up with this at our board meeting this summer. We are doing, because my passion is middle school, but we found through our research that really we need to target fourth and fifth graders for prevention, and that's kind of scary, so we're going to shoot for sixth grade. So we came in with this, came up with this tuned-in series. So this is something we're rolling out to all of the schools, and I'll have these at back-to-school night for, at the middle schools. We're posting it everywhere. Basically, we're setting up a whole series of parent education nights, from mental health to prevention, to communicating with your teenager who won't talk to you, all kinds of different options. So as long as the sixth-grade parents register for three of those and attend, then they can receive a fifty-dollar Visa gift card.
That's fantastic.
So anyone is invited, but the grant allows us to give fifty-dollar gift cards to sixth grade parents.
That's fantastic.
Anyway, so all of that information is on this. It's on social media, and I think it's an awesome, I mean, the lineup is fantastic, so I think as long as we can get the word out, we have the grant money to do that, so we're excited. I'm also looking for anyone who would be interested in sponsoring LAFI lunches on Wednesday once a month, so, you know, anyone who might be interested.
And can you clarify, just Liberty Alliance for Youth, right, LAFI?
Oh, yes, Liberty Alliance for Youth, sorry.
That's all right.
Yes.
And then, and that it's open to anybody to join, right, in the community?
Yes.
If you want to just give a little plug so that people can come to.
Yes.
So...
Yes, so we, we work a lot with the counselors and social workers, and in the community, we work with like the sheriff's office, the Child Protective Services, different agencies, synergy services, pretty much anybody that needs any help for their students. We have clubs at the middle school, and we have freshman clubs at the two high schools, and those students attend as well. And they have programs like the 988 bracelets that they did last year, LAFI funded those, just different programs throughout. But anybody can go, like I just went as a parent and got involved before any of this, just to see what I could do. But the target is really middle school, so that's kind of where we go, but then it kind of filters out. And when we talk to the hospital, and we talk to the police, we really probably need to be looking a little younger, but that's scary to fourth and fifth grade parents, so we figure we'll try to catch them at sixth grade.
Is the meeting scheduled on the Facebook page yet?
Yes.
It is, so and anybody can come?
It's updated.
So it's open once a month, roughly?
And we do provide lunch. We're trying to find sponsors, because we did not get our grant for LAFI for this year. We did for this particular program, but not our spending grant. So if you know any vendors or anyone, we can give you five or 10 minutes to come and speak at the meeting, or we can pass out information, but it's about thirty people.
Very good. Awesome.
But I'm going to, this is going to be everywhere, so please make sure we share it.
Very good.
I'm going to give some to you.
Thank you.
Other board remarks?
Just to echo, thank you, everybody, for your work. I know it's kind of a sprint, sometimes feeling like a sprint towards a cliff, and, you know, but we're, we're there, and so I'm so excited for tomorrow.
Just a jump.
I mean, in a good way, yes. But it just, I know it feels like a sprint sometimes, so I just want to thank everybody, and I know tomorrow's going to be great, and appreciate everybody's work.
I understand a number of our board members have seniors this year, so congratulations. That's a great feeling, to have a senior.
Is it?
I don't know. I know, I thought it was about my board.
Tell them, tell them.
You might have forgotten.
It's a great, it's a great experience.
So then again, to adults.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to dovetail a little bit on Jen, and just, you know, to the extent that anybody in the community ever does watch these broadcasts for fun, I would like to invite, you don't have to have a kid to be involved in some aspect of the school, and I think it is important for people in the community, you're a taxpayer, or a parent, or grandparent, I mean, there is some way that we can use your help, whether you're a mentor, or involved with Liberty Alliance for Youth, or... Just come to a competition. We have new men's volleyball and other sports starting this year. Just come be a part of it, because it's just a great way to be plugged into the community. And one of the things we consistently hear about in our culture right now is that people lack a sense of community, feel isolated, and one way you can connect is to be a part of our school system. I mean, you don't have to have a kid to be a part of what we're doing, and there's a lot of great things happening here, so.
I very highly recommend...
That's my soapbox for tonight.
...to being one of our fine arts performances, because I did go to Starlight this summer, and I actually thought that some of our stuff is better. Not this is Starlight, but we just do really great things, so.
We do. All right.
Did you want to touch on the Region Four meeting?
I think Angie should touch on that.
On the Fourth of September?
Yeah.
Is that the high school?
The high school.
MSBA is coming.
I know.
It's at Liberty North, and it's all about phones, and what's the other thing? There's a second thing on there, but they're going to talk about...
We're going to get training. We're going to get important training, things that we need to be trained upon.
And it will be a delicious meal.
Specifically, it'll be in Eagle Point. So we're, you know, the high-top tables, we're clearing that out, setting it up as banquet seating, and then we'll use some of the soft seating. Their agenda, they wanted some breakout spaces. So we appreciate our operations teams, tech department, nutrition services, bit of an all-hands-on-deck for that event that evening. Generally, they plan for about a hundred people, so we'll be ready for that, a little bit more. And then they'll incorporate some students as well, as that Nutrition Services has had some students, or interns working with them as well. So appreciate Nikki and Denise and others helping get ready for that event.
And I would also say, it starts at six-thirty. If there are board members who are attending, if you want to get there early and do a little bit of meet and greet, and just, you know, welcome people to our fabulous facility.
I agree.
So I think to clarify, this is for regional school board members.
Correct.
Right, this is all for...
So it's last year, a different high school, or a different district hosted, and we aren't like theirs.
Right.
So now this, you're...
This is, this is training for board members. But I think, I'm glad, Dan, that you mentioned it, because one of the questions I need to have into MSBA is, we have new requirements for the governor's award this year, and one of the requirements involves us serving together as a group, and I'm wondering if we all show up early and greet and do some, maybe we, like, if that will count, or if it has to be something else.